I'm muted.
Thank you. I don't even know if those phone calls are on. You just have to look.
Okay, my end now.
I can't see where we are. Yeah, I'm trying to.
Ready to have everybody in?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, everybody, let's call a meeting to order a special meeting of the Port St. Death City Commission. We have your agenda in front of you and the first item is our boat ramp. So we'll get Commissioner Ashbrook, are you on?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, very good. All right, first item is boat ramp. So I'll open the floor for discussion on our boat ramp.
I'm ready to open the boat ramp. Over the landing, based on the fact that we shut it and supported it to go and coincide with beaches being closed. And now that beaches are open and moving forward, I'd like to at least discuss the pros and the cons of opening the landing back up.
Mayor, I can kind of give you an update as to where all the executive orders, governor, what the county's done.
Absolutely, go ahead.
As mayor may not be aware, the governor issued an executive order twenty-one-eleven of twenty-one-twelve Wednesday evening. The county entered into phase one of reopening the town in the state of Florida. Twenty-one-eleven extended the short-term vacation rental ban until May fourth. It's kind of understanding that he's probably going to extend that again on May fourth, probably for another couple of weeks at least. But we don't really know. It's a little bit confusing because in executive order twenty-one-twelve, he states that the ban will stay in effect as long as one-twelve. So it's a little bit confusing, but it's kind of general knowledge, it's probably going to extend a little bit further. Twenty-one-twelve basically is kind of easing into phase one, there's certain things that can be done. But it's quarantine from out of state travel into this state, there's still the fourteen-day quarantine coming in. There's also the state of emergency is still declared and, you know, there's twenty-five percent capacity in restaurants. But bars and gyms and nail salons and hair salons are still to be closed. So and then the county yesterday extended the emergency declaration for another seven days. They did an order to let the beach restrictions just vacate. Therefore, there's no special rules on the beaches, they are open to residents, non-residents alike. They did the same thing with the boat ramp.
Thank you, Jim.
And Mayor, kind of to reiterate too, the board was very proactive with the boat ramp itself. They actually closed it at the beginning of the first of May, a tally for everyone. And then we came back on the twentieth and then you did a slow, soft opening back to Gulf County residents and now it's here before today to consider revocation.
You said the first of May, you meant first of April, I think.
Yeah.
And thus, in effect, right now, the city has emergency ordinance five-seventy-two, which restricts the use of the boat ramps with residents on, permanent residents on. In order to repeal that, you'd have to vote today to repeal.
Okay, all right. Anyone else have comments on the boat ramp?
I'm ready to open, I'll make a motion.
Okay, you make a motion to rescind ordinance five-seventy-two and open the boat ramp under its old conditions, I guess you could say, which everyone.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion by Commissioner Lowry, second by Commissioner Ashbrook to, to rescind ordinance five-seventy-two, which in essence opens the boat ramp to all boats, residents, and visitors alike. Basically, Clint, is that rescinding ordinance five-seventy-two just basically opens it up to everyone, correct?
Correct. Back to the normal rules we had before all this started.
Okay, all righty. So there is a motion and second, is there any more discussion? Anybody, anybody on the Zoom? Anyone out there, any emails at all? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And sign must pass five-oh to reopen the boat ramp. Okay, Jim, you want to take over?
Yes, sir. First order business rep for the boat ramp, what we're going to do is this afternoon, we will remove the signs that are over there now with the restrictions. We will go back to our existing signs, we will pull law enforcement back out of there and it'll be back to normal process before the COVID.
We didn't really, we didn't really say a date, I mean, but basically rescinding it means immediately, obviously. Okay, I got it.
Okay. One point of interest on pulling back law enforcement. If you'll recall, a while back, we voted and agreed to add additional funding to the overtime. And part of that overtime money was to supply an officer on the weekends starting the beginning of May. So I think it's a benefit to us that we already have law enforcement scheduled, they've been scheduled for some time now. They're not going to be anywhere near where they are now. Their role will be what they did last year, if you'll recall, and that's to try and increase revenue for those that are launching. They're down there for officer presence, they help with parking, help with overflow, and we supported that. And I talked to the chief yesterday and they're prepared, I guess, this weekend or today. The idea Friday was a Friday, Saturday, Sunday deal. And I explained to him that we need to make absolutely sure that they realize the role of their presence down there is completely different from what it has been the last several days. Their role will be back in the back towards the area where people park and where people launch and to do the same job that they did this time last year. So I want to make sure that everybody's aware, there will still be law enforcement presence down there, but it has nothing to do with telling people who can and can't launch.
Let me, let me see if I understand that then. So you, you say that, that we're going, we've already approved having an officer down there from sunrise to sunset or just spot check?
No, it's a, it's a officer assigned, someone that was probably off that day and they did it this time last year. Now, the busy weekends and their, their job was to assist with parking and to, hopefully, I think that it will increase the people to pay. I believe we have an issue and we're going to tackle that in upcoming meetings on this new sticker system verifying who is eligible to not pay and who should be paying. That's what the thinking was back there when it was set up.
I, I think we probably need to clarify a little bit more, especially to help the chief. And Jim, is it going to be every weekend from now till when? Or you said busy weekends, who's going to identify who the busy, when the busy weekends are? So sure, come up chief. So that's, we need to make sure we've got our eyes dotted, t's crossed here.
Basically, what I did was creating this overtime schedule for Fridays where we, we see a lot of boats, whether it's group or seasons, snapper season, scolopse season, and Saturdays. And if there's a need, like the first weekend is scolopse, we'll do a Sunday. Today, the officer was, and I did this eight, ten weeks ago, and we schedule everything well in advance before this pandemic. But anyway, the officer that's there today is there from seven to three. So he was there this morning, we just parked him there to check IDs. I just sent him a text and said, call back and you're no longer checking IDs. So he'll just be there as a presence like he normally would be whether this pandemic is going on or not. So there'll still be somebody there today and tomorrow, next weekend, there may be somebody just there Saturday. But that's, that's the way it's scheduled.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify in my mind and staff's mind too, that why can the budget people make sure we, we fall in that, somewhere in that budget that we had budgeted in? So we won't be surprised.
Yeah, we added, we voted on five thousand dollars. And then when we voted on that and approved it, we discussed that one of the roles or one of the options of spending that additional five thousand would be at the boat landing.
Very good. I just, just want to make sure we're all clear and understand what we're doing because I, I mean, I love them down there. It's gonna, it'll help in the long run, so, okay.
One more thing, one thing left, Mr. Mayor. I, I mean, I got a pile of calls and I'm sure everybody else is doing the law enforcement thing down there full-time. But I just want to clarify, I mean, is chief, are they going to be, they're going to be there all day on the weekends? Like Friday?
The way, it's different times, today and tomorrow, the officer's there from seven to three. And the schedule goes on, sometimes it's, it's eight hours a day, sometimes eight-four, sometimes it's in the six. So when the time changes or the time changes, it'll, it'll, it'll change to six, it's maybe ten to six on Saturday.
I think, I think more my concern is people feel like with law enforcement, they're full-time, they're being harassed. I mean, it's, it's, and I get the press. I like to stop those people. I mean, it's, but I don't want them to feel that way, is what I'm saying.
Their role and what we had discussed was, or help with parking, overflow parking.
What I was saying, we have weekends where the traffic from trucks and trailers backed up into ninety-eight and they're lined up in front of the realities going toward First Baptist. And so the officer gets out there and makes them reroute on Baltel to line up. And it's also a fiasco when they all.
Yeah, and I get scolopse season and all that because it is nuts.
Yeah, their, their, their role is what we ask them to do, is not do an FWC job and DUIs, that kind of stuff. They're not, they're, they're down there, in my mind, their number one role is to increase the revenue because we have a problem, we have an issue that people aren't paying and they're not eligible to not pay, they shouldn't be paying. And that's what first brought up that conversation.
I, I think what I'm hearing is it'd be more of a passive role.
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, I don't, you know, Commissioner Lowry and I probably, all of us probably have some of the same calls. But more of a passive role, just your presence, your presence there is, is somewhat like Commissioner Hoffman said when he put up the sign about getting towed. Well, we knew it could tow, but maybe that would deter some of them from launching. So hopefully, you know, back in the day, we parked a police car down there, nobody in it, and that got some attention too, so.
We're just going to have a spare right now, are we doing that?
Right, right, so, so good. So it, it's more of a passive role, just your, your presence there, so.
And then the main thing they're doing is helping with traffic, uh, traffic issues.
Yeah, we've all seen that, but mostly scolopse season, when I saw that, so we'll see. I think everybody's ready to get out of the house, so we might as well end up seeing it tomorrow.
I mean, there was a bunch of boats that showed up last Saturday, I think thirty-five were turned away.
Right.
Once they know it's opened up, tomorrow they'll be visiting.
Got you.
Well, we also got to realize the chief scheduled this weeks prior, like almost eight weeks ago. It wouldn't really be fair, I don't think, I would argue that it's not fair at all to now tell someone that's worked their whole schedule around, well, I can't do this because I'm assigned to the boat landing. Now, if we want to revisit when we called up and with the notification of people being assigned to it or volunteering for it, we can revisit it, but right now, I think it's a fair thing to do is let these people work.
Let's let it play out and have this budgeted, so let's just see, see how it.
I'm fine with that, passive role. Yeah, I just want to make sure we got some work to do.
Got you, all right.
Mayor, the next couple of items are kind of off the record. At this point, I don't think we can take any action as far as four-year program from home turning because right now, we're still under the executive order, we're submitting social distance, it's a question. But we're getting a lot of calls about where are we going to open up all season? Where are we going to open up the stackhouse and watch a gym, rental, so kind of thing. So our thinking is right now to be prepared to open those up, make sure our facilities are top-notch, make sure we have employees lined up to hire for the summer recreation program. But right now, staff feels that we cannot jump out there and open these things up based on the governor's orders.
And we didn't, and we didn't talk about that when we opened up the boat ramp. But, but all the rules from the governor and the CDC are still in place and no more than ten people, social distance, that type thing. So if we see that, that's not working down there, then, then I would be the first one to vote to close it back down again. We, we've just got to, we would not have a party down there.
We put on the website too, we gave each of you a copy of frequently asked questions, it's very good. Pretty excellent for us.
Yep.
So we gave each one, that way we can all understand what, what we can or can't do at this point in time based on the governor's orders. So basically, summer recreation program, the baseball softball season, and city rental facilities and special events. At this point, we just want all of us to be thinking about it, watching what the governor's order is doing for us and that way we're prepared when and if we want to open this facility back up.
Right, I mean, right now, even without the governor's orders, and my thinking is, is I don't think we can do it. I've got, I got some expert recommendations online this morning from, from University of Minnesota infectious disease group studies and recommends, and they've got a three-phase, and I'll, I'll, I'll email it to you, Jim, and you can shoot it out. I'll say everyone, and it's a three-phase program and tells you how to prepare for each phase as far as getting your schools back open, churches back open, and, and those type things. It's, it's very good, it's very comprehensive, but it's something I think would help all of us and it comes from, comes from experts. So, so I'll, I'll send that out.
All right, we'll keep monitoring one of these topics on here and we'll stick along with the governor's orders.
Yeah, I like saying is once we start opening these things, you should think about it and be careful. And because so far, we've done a great job of protecting the people that care about it, you know, so we kept it simple. We continue with the social distancing, I don't care what we open back up, it's, it's up to the citizen to be responsible. Because this, this pandemic is going to be here for a while until we find a vaccine or whatever, so if you open things back up soon, you're going to still have to mind restrictions and the thing that we take care of stuff.
No doubt. Done well, we'll keep going that way. But I will say that we've only had a hundred and thirty tests in Gulf County and that's like less than one percent of the whole population. So, so we're, we're, there's still some out there. But we do what we've been doing, maybe we'll, maybe we'll keep it out there.
The next thing we know is a reference to city hall lobbying. All indications are that there's going to be soft openings, county office, Franklin County. So our plan is right now to do a soft opening back up on Monday. Staff has been working, we haven't missed today as far as working, but looking to do a soft opening back on Monday is what I'm thinking.
Soft meaning what?
Front door to be open, we're not going to go out there and do a great people ask, people that like to come on down to city hall. But we will be open when public can come in, we've actually done some precautions there at city hall and we're going to be very cautious with staff.
I would, I would recommend that with that, anyone that comes in that, that, that has business behind the doors, business with you or Mike or any, any staff member, they, they need to sanitize in the lobby as well as we need to have masks for them. So I would say if someone comes to see anybody behind the doors, that their, they have, their hands have to be completely sanitized as well as providing them a mask at that time. I, I don't, I would hate for somebody to walk in there and infect. And, and the, and the experts are saying, if someone that has the virus wears a mask, you're, and you don't, there's a ten, only a ten percent chance that you're going to get it. If both of you wear a mask, it's like one percent. So, so I would, I would, I feel, and I would like to hear from the comments from other commissioners, but from my point of view, I would not, either we say nobody can go behind the doors or if they have business, sanitize, wear a mask.
See, I like to comment, I, I would, I wouldn't want anybody to go behind the doors right now.
Neither would I.
I think I paid the bill, I paid the bill, I paid the bill. Couldn't invite anybody like that, you just need someone in my side.
Got it.
Very good, okay.
I got one other question, what about the building board? I did talk with Oak Trail last week, they've been working, telling me what they've been doing over there. I did tell him to do an assault entry on Monday, I'm going to follow with him to see exactly what he plans to do. Kelly's got all the phones and everything right now for her, so if you call her, I'm going to run it forward directly to her. But I will find out exactly when he plans to put somebody physically back in.
Yeah, that's an extremely small office.
Yep.
I don't think you can walk in there and be six feet from anybody. And as well as Public Works Office, what about that?
Exactly, right now, everything is shuttered, right now, to the general public, right now, we've nodded. And that's what we're looking at, trying to figure out what, what's the best measure for assault entry to get back into the general public, it's a baby stand.
Okay. Kid, dokey, anybody else got anything before we go to Sacramento?
I think the only thing, Mr. Mayor, I've got, I know restaurants are open and I just want to get some clarification on how the city was planning to, or if they were policing that, the twenty-five percent in the outside deal. Maybe the chief could.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated, but, but yeah, they, it's all on the restaurants, but I would say this. If, you know, strolling down the streets by our law enforcement people, they see a packed restaurant, they, they, I mean, it's pretty common sense that, you know, you, you got more than twenty-five percent here. Or you could walk in there and say, you know, you have twenty-five percent. You can have outside seating with six feet apart on the table, I know that, but it's going to be hard. It's very, very similar, Commissioner Lowry, to folks from out of state coming in here and self-quarantine for fourteen days. There's no way to enforce it, you know, they're, I'm sure they're not doing it either, so.
I mean, my question, I think my question is, chief, are y'all, how are you going to enforce that? Or are you, what are you, what's your, like, how? I would, I would suggest that, Mayor, you ask. I don't know, when, when the first governor's order, governor's order came out, we go and just speak with all the restaurant owners or managers and make sure they were, they knew what the rules were. And they all, and they all agreed to comply. You know, Monday, we can have, I don't, we can have somebody go and just say, hey, the rules have changed, we'll make sure you're aware and.
That's a great idea, you okay with that?
It won't be intimidating anybody or anything, it'll just be making sure they know what's going on. If, if it gets to a point, I mean, we, we've had probably three messages on Facebook this morning. People are already telling on somebody, hey, so-and-so from Michigan showed up and scored at my house yesterday. You know, so that's going to happen, other business owners are going to tell on business owners, we'll keep an eye on it. And if we see that somebody's not following the guidelines, then we'll, we'll go from there.
That's good, I mean, it's just a good public service, if you guys get each one of them, so, yeah. So, Commissioner Lowry, I think obviously if they do that, that the owners know somebody's kind of looking over their shoulder a little bit.
Yeah, I, I just thought the conception of we're just watching, nonstop.
Right, right. We got a hammer over their head.
Right, these businesses have been semi-close, you know, and, I mean, they, a lot of them, I talked to one of those yesterday and a business that was just bought and couldn't apply for the, you know, the relief funding and hurt. Oh, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, that's, you got to think about that.
Yeah, they're, I think they're all excited about opening back up and seeing people. So, and if things go smooth, they may get it fifty percent next week.
Right.
Okay. Anything else before we go on to the last item? Okay, Sacramento, I support Jim, you want to take that or you or Mike?
Yes, I'll start off. Before we cover, we still asked to start looking at what different options were available to city of Fordings based on the COVID-nineteen. What we did was, we went back and tried to look at a couple of different things. Look at what Mike has put together, he's put together four different options for you to look at. I'll let Mike go through and pitch you know each one of these dollars representing on there. But basically, the first one is basically the Starcrack, my opinion, that's basically where the county was at as far as what's been out there. And that represents how much money it would cost for the city if we were to go to that extreme. And then we lower stuff down in tiers and that, but Michael, explain each one of these options to you and tell you what that means to you.
Yes, Mayor, so we took a two payroll period or four weeks, a hundred and sixty hours on average if an employee works full-time for two payrolls and calculated the difference from their regular pay to the, option one is two and a half times overtime. That would be the difference from the regular pay and two and a half overtime. Option two is, is time and a half, so a half hour of overtime. And, and that's, option two is, is based on salaries, each employee receiving a varying amount depending on their payroll, their salary amount. Option three is the same overtime except flattening out, giving each employee the equal share based on an average. And we separated the full-time employees and the part-time employees. But then, so the total for option two and option three are the same, the difference is one employee would receive more, one would receive less. And option two and option three is an equal amount for all employees. And then we wanted to give you a lower option, and so we just took a flat amount in option four. And again, we broke out a difference for full-time and, and part-time. There's fifty-two of full-time active currently and four part-time employees. Fifty-six total employees make up the calculation.
And Mayor, looking at these options on there, option number one, I think is way too extraordinary more than we could afford to sit around there with option number one. And option number two, personally, I don't think it's a good idea to give different amounts on forwards. I think if this is something, because all of our employees were there for throughout the COVID-nineteen event on there. So my recommendation, if you're going to do something, look at option number three or number four that puts each one of the employees the same equal amount because they're equally there at the same length time.
Well, personally, I mean, it's not personally, but, but obviously, none of this is budgeted. And so we need to, of course, think real strong about that. Thing that I, that I support is, is giving everyone the same dollar amount, which would be option four simply because under the other options, the rich get richer and the poor get poorer. So the folks on the bottom of the total bowl will get less than the guys on top of the total bowl. And I think if all of them come to work and all of them doing the job, they also get the same amount. And that's just, I, I just think that's a fair way to do it and, and for morale, I think it would be better also. And so, you know, I wish we could give them more, I, I, all our employees are loyal and dedicated. our employees are loyal and dedicated and we love them all. I know we do. Uh, but we do have to be, uh, fiscally, uh, conservative with the taxpayer dollars. And, uh, so, but these are extraordinary times and, and, uh, they're, they're coming to work with, with the threat of, of this virus over their head. And, uh, so it's, it's a little bit, a little bit different scenario than just going out and giving a bonus. Uh, we appreciate what they've done. They've gone over and above. Uh, there's no, um, help from the inmate work crews. And, uh, so we picked up slack. But at the same time, we've always been conservative. We need to be conservative, uh, and so we won't have to raise taxes for, uh, for the, everyone out there that, uh, that actually has to pay property tax. So, uh, that's, uh, that's my two cents worth.
Commissioner, what they give out more like a weird thought with the report back. Try, hoping there'll be some kind of, you know, going to come out there and help out the city. But at this point in time, Mike and I don't blow it at me.
Well, if one comes up, that'd be great. If not, I mean, we just, uh, if the board wants to do, you know, reward the employees for, for their dedication and loyalty. I don't have a problem with that. Uh, but the budget will take a hit and we'll have to figure that out, especially with, with the next year's budget, uh, workshop coming up soon. That's all. Anybody else have any comments?
I support, uh, option four. I'm, I'm prepared to make that motion that we move forward with option four.
Okay. There's a motion by, uh, Commissioner Hoffman for option four and second by Commissioner Langston. Uh, any further discussion? I have a question. Do you have any, any ideas where this money's going to come from?
It's, like you said, it is unbudgeted. Uh, it would have to come from reserves. I mean, we have reserves, uh, of salaries that we received, uh, from FEMA reimbursements for previous salaries that were covered in, in last year and this year's budget already. So, uh, it would have to come from reserves.
And we're, we're still how much short from FEMA though, even though they can't from FEMA.
Yes, yes. The, the four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which is the bulk of our salaries, uh, during the storm for overtime that they're reimbursing us, we've not received that yet. I'm working, uh, weekly with the state auditor adjuster, uh, to verifying our salary, going over issues and questions that they're having. Um, and I think we're close to getting that, those funds. So, so, uh, so certainly we have money in reserves currently and, and I think that four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars will be along in the next few weeks as well.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure everybody understood that, you know, we're supposed to get reimbursed, but we haven't yet. So, it's, uh, it's always coming. Um, okay. Uh, discussion, Commissioner Ashbrook, uh, do you have any comments?
Mayor, I'm, I'm, Mayor, I'm okay with it. It's a little bit of heartburn that, you know, there's people that are out there that aren't making any money right now and we're paying more. Uh, but we are also not qualified to accept PPP. So, uh, this is our way of, you know, self-financing a PPP program.
Yeah, that's a good, good, good point. Uh, anyone online? Any emails? Okay. All in favor, I suppose? Same time. Motion passed five oh, I believe I heard, Commissioner Ashbrook.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll do that. We thank the employees. I, I want to, uh, I'll, I'll craft a little letter that, uh, appreciation and, and go along with it. And I, uh, I think it's a good thing.
That's all we had to do, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? I've got one thing that, that some of you may have seen, some of you may not have, but San Joe Company, uh, uh, released a, a statement or a press release yesterday that the, uh, the construction of the dry barn, uh, at Marina will start very soon. It could be the next week or so. And, uh, so they're, they're excited about that. Uh, I think it said, uh, sixty-three thousand square feet of space, two hundred and fifty-something, uh, dry slips, uh, forty-eight wet slips when it's going. And then the corset store. And we all know what the rest of it pretty much looks like. But there, uh, as far as I know, um, they've got, the development order's been passed. All their permits are in hand. So, uh, uh, look for that to start soon. And I, and I told them, I thought that's good news along, along with being going up and homes are popping up here. And it's exciting time right now, of course. And, uh, we need, need some good news with all this COVID nineteen going around. So, uh, I'll, also, uh, I, you know, a lot of times I talk the talk and then I decide I'd walk the walk. So I got tested this week just to see how the system worked. And, uh, it's, it's pretty easy. Uh, it doesn't take long. Uh, you call, uh, the number, PanCare's got a number out there. You call that number. Uh, they'll give you a, uh, an ID. Uh, you go online and, and, uh, fill out a patient intake form, which is basically like you do when you go to the doctor for the first time. Uh, if you don't have a computer, you just go down to any way. They'll give you the paperwork of legal, I mean, clipboard, fill that out. You stay in your car. You drive up. There's a TV monitor there and you, the doctor comes on, the PanCare doctor comes on TV monitor, asks you a few questions. Uh, once he's through, they, they swab you and you're, you're on your way. You have results in three to four days. So, uh, I should get mine today or Monday, knock on wood. I hope it's okay. But I haven't had any symptoms. They asked me, they asked me why, why I want to get tested. And I said, well, because I'm old and you said we could if you're over sixty-five. So I said, I'll take advantage of it. So I did. And, uh.
That wasn't an antibody test.
No, the antibody test starts Monday. And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure about who will be eligible for that. But.
I think pretty much anyone.
Anyone. So the, the only, the only thing about that, from what I understand, talking to a doctor, it's a COVID antibody test. There are nineteen covas, regular flu is, is one of the covas. So, so if it's not specific for COVID nineteen, I don't really know what it's going to accomplish. So, uh, I, I plan to find out if it's going to be specific for, uh, COVID nineteen. Anyway, anyone else? Anything to build on the order? Okay, we'll stand adjourned.